All right, stamp the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. This is Monday, December 19th. If you have any questions, comments, anything on your mind, come up to this microphone over here and tell us your name and address and what's on your agenda tonight. Call the roll, please.
Peter.
Here.
Ginsvater.
Here.
Kleeman is absent. Kufa?
Here.
Port?
Here.
Paul?
Present.
Volz is absent.
Motion to excuse Members Kleeman and Volz.
Support.
Any questions? Favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Go to consent agenda. City Council minutes of December 5th, 2022, regular meeting recommendation approved. And B's, the planning commission minutes of October 12th, 2022, meeting recommendation received.
Motion to approve A and B is presented.
Any questions? Home papers say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have no ordinance of resolution. Let's go to number six. Reports administration, Mr. D.
Yes, just a couple of things tonight. First, an update on the Paser study, which is that citywide evaluation of the road conditions. It's been postponed, partially due to inclement weather. Update on when it will be rescheduled will be provided to you when I get that date. Ongoing concerns of the recently completed roadwork on Second Street have been addressed again by the contractor. You received correspondence from them acknowledging the concerns with an explanation, plus the offer to fill the cracks at no cost to the city. If that's acceptable, then I'll work with Bob and the contractor to go ahead and schedule that.
I think they should.
Do you need a motion for that, or?
No.
No?
No, I just want awareness and...
Is that the facts that we're comfortable with, based on the work that was being done?
I believe so. Their explanation makes sense. The freeze thaw and the timing, it's unusual for it to happen. There wasn't any finger pointing, but there was mention of maybe heavier trucks being on it too soon. So, the other option would be a redo, right?
Did the engineer look at the reasoning? Did they get a chance to see their correspondence?
Of the city engineer?
Yeah.
No, not yet.
I mean, it probably wouldn't be bad to pass that by him and have him look at it and...
That was more or less my question. Like, if it satisfies his requirements for what our standard is, then I'm fine with it. If not, then we may have to have another discussion.
Perfect. Yep, I did let them know about this concern after the last meeting when we talked about it. So that makes complete sense to have them review it first before we give the thumbs up. So, okay, so that's how I'll proceed with that.
Thank you.
You're welcome. M-29 bridge work regarding communication and contingency plans. On December 14th, Michigan Department of Transportation published their press release on the M-29 bridge repair. The project is estimated at $1.2 million with an approximate project end date of April 2023. Traffic will remain open with traffic shifts, except for a couple of days in the spring near the end of the project. Notice and posted detours will occur at that time. Prior to the press release on October 20th, MDOT held a pre-construction meeting that included, but was not limited to, the contractors, city administration, St. Clair Road Commission, St. Clair Police Department, St. Clair Fire Department, Department of Public Works. Plus, as part of the discussion, notification had been or would be sent to bridge operators, Malcolm Marine Facelis, adjacent businesses, including Cargill, East China School District, St. Clair Boat Harbor, U.S. Coast Guard, and Emergency Management Homeland Security Border Patrol. The conversation was on the project itself, timeline, traffic shifts, traffic closure, and troubleshooting for emergencies on the Pine River or needed access to the Pine River or St. Clair River, vice versa. There are contingency plans in place, including one for potential ice jams that might occur from having a stationary barge under the bridge in the river that might block the ice from getting through. River conditions will be monitored, and the barge can be removed to let the ice through if and when that happens. Municipal offices will be closed for the holidays, the next two Mondays and next two Fridays, December 23rd, 26th, 30th, and January 2nd. No change to waste management services during these next two weeks. The next city council meeting will be held on Tuesday, January 3rd, at 7:00 PM. Thank you to Councilmember Kleeman and Councilmember Ginsvater for your service. Councilmember Ginsvater, thank you for your leadership. It has been a pleasure to work with you on a different level during this past year.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And happy holidays and happy new year to everyone.
Any questions for now?
Just a question. Talking about the bridge closure with Ed Smith and Rivers Ben Mariner, were they notified?
Yes, I sent them the press release directly.
Okay.
All right. Anything from Mr. Attorney over here?
Nothing this evening, Your Honor.
Okay. City departments, anything? Reese, you want us to kick this off?
Thank you. The City of St. Clair Recreation Commission has been working on updating our Parks and Recreation Plan. We update the plan every five years. This is a requirement of the Michigan Natural Resources so that we maintain our eligibility for grants. And we conducted a leadership survey and a public survey as part of the planning process. And we also issued a public notice. It was published in the Times Herald for a 30-day review of the plan, and that started December 8th of this year. And the plan is available at City Hall. There's a copy of the plan there. It's also at the library. There is a link to the plan on the city website. And we also posted the link on our City of St. Clair Recreation Facebook page. And I made a list, just a quick list, of some of the things we've completed in the last five years that we had the plan. So, the Imagination Station Playground, we did the rebuild project. We also completed the Palmer Park Boardwalk in 2019. We did receive the, and we were awarded the MDOT grant for the Clinton Avenue Bike Path. And we installed two kiosks for the Bridge to Bay Trail, one at Greg Park and one at Palmer Park. We worked with the Rotary Club of St. Clair for the Rotary Park Wildlife Landing. This is the little park that's located on the Pine River where the floating docks are located. And we did a restoration of the shoreline there and some landscaping. We promoted our downtown with the installation of the Freighter Walk on the Boardwalk. And the Historical Museum updated the Landville Shipyard Tile Walk on Clinton Avenue. And we also installed a live cam of the freighters at the Voyager Restaurant, or that's where it's located. And as far as beautification projects, we re-landscaped Diamond Point, Sinclair, and Trumbull Avenue. For downtown decor, we did install the Christmas tree platform. We refurbished the snowflake lightings, and we purchased new seasonal banners. And out at Legacy Park, we're working on the development of a sledding hill. The Harbor and the Golf Commission are included in the Recreation Master Plan. So, the Harbor this year received a DNR Waterways Grant for Engineering Study on the North Seawall. And the Golf Course has installed new drain systems, and they're in the process of purchasing new golf carts. We worked with the St. Clair County Metropolitan Planning Commission to update this plan. And Dave Struck is here from the Planning Commission to just do a quick overview of the plan itself.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. For those that don't know me, I'm Dave Struck. I'm the Planning Director, Deputy County Administrator for the county. And so, this is actually the third plan in recent years that we've had the pleasure of working with the city on to update. We most recently updated the city's master plan back in 2018. And then this is actually the second time around, working with the Recreation Department to update the five-year recreation plan. So, just wanted to sort of give you a quick overview of the plan, just to kind of see what it looks like. As Treese said, it is out there online for the community to be able to review. We're currently in a 30-day review period, which is required by the DNR, when it comes to getting recreation plans approved. Basically, what you're going to see inside of the plan follows a familiar structure. So, just about every community across the state is going to have these elements in the plan. And that's, like Treese said, the DNR requires all of these elements to be in the plan in some sort of format in order to make the community eligible for recreation grant funding. And that could be anything from the Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund, the Recreation Passport Program, and other DNR grants, like the Waterways Commission for projects at the Harbor. So, you know, it's pretty standard. You're going to see this format pretty much, like I said, in most community recreation plans. We've kept basically the same format as the previous plan, right? So, this was an update, but that plan does have to be current within a five-year span to go after grant funding. So, this first section is the community description. And I don't have every single page of every chapter here. I just wanted to kind of give you all a flavor of kind of what's contained in each section. This community description section is pretty self-explanatory, just kind of gives an overview of demographic trends that have taken place over the last five years, in some cases 10 years, just to kind of show some of those trends that are taking place. It also talks about the different land uses throughout the city, and topography, and geographic, and environmental resources here in the city. We've updated all of the mapping throughout the document, so it's kind of got a new look compared to what's been in previous documents. So, we've been able to map, for instance, you can see this map here shows things like land cover and how much impervious surface is there, and where, you know, flood zones exist within the county. So, all of those maps have been updated. We've tried to update photos as best we could as well. Certainly, if there's any photographs the city has that they want to swap out, can easily do that. Jumping into the second section here, the administrative structure. This basically just sort of lays out how Parks and Recreation is administered in the city. So, it goes over the organizational chart, what the funding looks like, what the budget for Parks and Recreation and the other related amenities are here in the city. We do cover all of the past grant-assisted projects that the city's ever gotten from the DNR, as well as some of the other entities as well, some of the private foundation funding, the MDOT TAP grant that the city recently received. All of that's covered. We do go into detail about the countywide millage and the funding that's come to the city through that mechanism since 1995. That's all detailed in the administrative structure section. And then again, because the city is unique from, you know, most other communities in our county at least, with the Boat Harbor, we do have to have kind of separate information covering Boat Harbor's budget, planned improvements, dredging schedules, things of that nature, and likewise for the Golf Course. You jump ahead into Chapter Three, the Recreation Inventory. This is really just a sort of all-encompassing look at all of the different facilities and amenities that not only the city has to offer, but the county and other regional entities throughout St. Clair County and beyond. So, we usually start off with a local inventory, so we cover all of the city's parks and programming. You'll notice that on the descriptions for the city parks, it also includes an accessibility rating. That's basically an assessment of how well that particular facility is, including things like ADA accessibility. So, you'll notice that most of the parks, the bigger parks, have a rating of three, which means, you know, most of the elements at the park are ADA compliant. And then some of the smaller pocket parks where they may just have landscaping, not as much activity, you're going to see those have typically lower accessibility ratings. But that is a requirement by MDR to include in the park profiles. As I said, we then cover, you know, the other townships nearby, the surrounding area. We talk about any private facilities that may exist. We then go into, you know, to all the wonderful programs that the city offers here in terms of, you know, events, and aquatic programs, and other types of programming that may exist. Then we go into the county facilities, of course. So, we talk about all the different county parks, state-of-Michigan-owned facilities. And then from there, we jump into non-motorized, so trails and greenways. So, we've kind of included in here a walkable, five-minute walking map for the city, which obviously St. Clair is quite a walkable community. We have tied everything to include, you know, the Bridge to Bay Trail, Latim Suavoca Trail. But obviously, Bridge to Bay Trail is front and center here in the city, as you obviously have legs of that system. And so, we've got the updated mapping that the Regional Partnership just came out with, updated all the Bridge to Bay Trail mapping. We've tied that in with the most recent St. Clair County Trails Plan. So, things like right now the Clinton Avenue side path that's being worked on, other potential gaps in the city that have been identified, like the St. Clair South Connector that heads out of town further south toward Marine City. And then the Fredmore Highway Trail, which ultimately, for those of you who may not be familiar, the McComb Orchard Trail that kind of ends in Richmond right now. There's been a long-term goal to connect the Bridge to Bay Trail to the McComb Orchard Trail. And so, throughout the countywide planning process, Fredmore Highway was identified as a preferred alternative to do just that. And that's actually part of a larger trail system that runs all the way from Port Huron to the west side of the state in South Haven, part of the Great Lake to Lake Trail System, which has five routes as you work your way up the state of Michigan. So, we have quite a bit of discussion on trails. And then we kind of close out this section looking at water trails in the Blue Eyes of St. Clair, the Pine River paddle, and some of the kayaking opportunities here in the county. Chapter Four basically just gives an overview of the planning process and the public input that went into this. And so, as Treese said, we did a local leadership survey, which many of you likely took part in, did an online community survey. And so, this chapter kind of just summarizes things that were pulled out of that survey input. So, things that leaders identified as being needs at specific parks, things that they, you know, love about parks in the city, things that might be able to be improved. And then there was also a survey done of middle school students, which was really unique. You don't get that opportunity very often to get that sort of youth input. And so, you know, Treese was fortunate enough to work with a local middle school teacher. And so, we've captured a summary of their, you know, what they've identified as things they like to do when they go to the park, or things that they like to see at parks that may not exist right now. So, that's all captured in here. We also look at some different national standards in terms of different facilities, how many, you know, ball diamonds a community might have based on the population, as well as how many acreage, how many acres of parkland a community might have based on population. And based on doing these comparisons of standards, especially when you consider, when you include the amenities from the directly surrounding townships, currently there are no deficiencies in terms of acreage for parkland based on the population. And then we close this out just looking at some recreation trends at a national level. So, we've included that in here in terms of, you know, what are the most popular sorts of outdoor recreation, just to kind of give some recreation trends. That's sort of something we started in the last plan five years ago. From there, all of that input analysis ends up in your goals and objectives and your strategic action plan. And so, this chapter really hasn't changed drastically. There's still five overarching planning objectives. Those are all the same that carried over from the existing plan. So, maintaining and improving existing parks, establishing a continuous citywide bikeway and walkway system, acquiring and developing new parks, continuing to improve recreation services and partnerships, and then providing for efficient administration and funding of Parks and Recreation. You know, those pretty much encompass just about anything you might, you know, might come the city's way over the next five years. So, I think this Goals and Action Plan chapter does a nice job of balancing sort of the more general and then the specific in terms of specific actions and specific projects at some of the different parks. And, you know, you probably can't see all of this very well from where you're sitting, but, you know, there's a total of 14 goals, and so each park basically has its own goal with a set of different strategic actions underneath, which are the bulleted items. And so, you know, a lot of those did carry over. Treese worked with the Recreation Commission to go through the list in your existing plan, vet those out, figure out which ones, you know, don't apply anymore, which ones are still valid. And then, you know, as well as any new actions that might need to be added in there as well. So, you know, I think from the standpoint of the next five years, in terms of if a grant opportunity comes your way, I think you're very well covered in terms of your plan being able to support going after that type of opportunity. Let me see here. And then lastly, following those goals in terms of implementation strategies, essentially gives an overview of some of the different recreation funding programs that I mentioned earlier from the MDR, as well as the Waterways Commission. Well, we've included some of the newest funding programs as well, like the newest one for the, for MDR is the Spark Grant Program, which you may have heard of in recent months. So, that's all in there now. And then, in the appendix, we do also have a special section that's required by the state, since you do have the Boat Harbor. Essentially, this has the updated capital improvement schedule for the next five years in terms of needed improvements, any information on dredging that's going to take place, and then the site plan, which is also a required element. So, that is the plan in a nutshell. I left out obviously lots of pages, but it kind of gives you at least a flavor of what it looks like. Again, this plan is located, you know, at the library, I think here in City Hall. And it's online here on the city's website as well. In terms of the approval process, we are currently in that 30-day review period that's required before anything else can happen. And so, that should expire around January 9th. And then, the next step after that, once that review period expires, would be a public hearing and adopting of the plan. The plan does need to be submitted by the, to the DNR by February 1st in order for the city to be eligible to apply for grant funding by April 1st. So, all of their grant programs have deadlines of April 1st, but the plan needs to be adopted and submitted into the state by February 1st. So, that's kind of the plan and the process in a nutshell. Happy to answer any questions anyone might have. And I do want to point out again that, you know, we are in the 30-day review period. And certainly, if there's any, anything identified, we can still make, we can make edits or revise things that, you know, anybody might see as being necessary.
I had just one question. Maybe this is better for Dave, sure, if I seem to, I'll ask him. But I noticed that the appendix A2, right to the back, the dredging at the harbor, that they're saying no dredging required this year because of high water, but I think the water's the lowest suspended.
Yeah, that?
Maybe normal water.
I'll check. Yeah, that. Let me write a note on that.
I don't have a question, just a comment. That inclusion of the middle school survey, I think, is so helpful. And I just think that was a great idea. So, I flipped to that page, so I'm curious to read what they think.
Yeah, I agree. We don't always have the opportunity to get, you know, such good input from our school-aged kids. You know, oftentimes, it's the adults that come to public input meetings or do surveys. So, I think it's great.
Anybody else have any questions for Dave, for Treese? Great, thank you. Good job, you guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we will go to D. Any authorities, boards, commissions, committee chairs, or council reps, anything? We have no unfinished business. Let's go to new business. A, schedule public hearing for Parks and Rec Master Plan.
Yes, as Treese and Dave stated, we are at the part of the process that requires a public hearing. We would like to schedule that for Monday, January 16th, at 7:00 AM.
Motion to approve.
Support.
7:00 PM, sorry, 7:00 PM.
Motion to approve. Support.
All right, the motion made, supported for the January 16th, 7:00 PM, of a hearing. Questions? Home papers say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, let's go to B. The board and commission is ready for tonight. I'll have more in the first meeting in January, and then the second meeting in January. My goal will be have those all done and the council appointments made at that time. So, with your endorsement, the Board of Review will reappoint Blake Eitner and Judith Shaw for one-year terms expiring December 31st, 2023. Cemetery Board of Trustees reappoint Tim Disserath for a three-year term expiring December 31st, 2025. And the Harbor Commission reappoint Dennis Buchholz and Chuck Harder, three-year terms expiring December 31st, 2025. And the Golf Commission reappoint Peter Tinsley, Sycamore Lions Club representative, for a one-year term to expire December 31st, 2023.
Motion to approve. The appointment is recommended. Support.
Questions? Home papers say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? For your information. You have some vacancies on the Beautification Commission and the Cemetery Board of Trustees. Applications are available at City Hall or on the St. Clair City website. All right. All right, thank you. Let's go to number 90. Claims of the council, December 8th and 15th, 2022.
Hearing no questions. Your Honor, make a motion to approve as presented.
Support. Any questions or comments? Home papers say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we'll go to number 10. Anybody have anything non-agenda? Three minutes. Get rid of the pause here.
Mr. Mayor, Council, Members of Administration, Bob Courier, Secretary/Treasurer, Blue Water Offshore Racing Association. The race is coming, but I'm not here this evening to talk about the race, but yet to honor one of your own. Blue Water Offshore Board of Directors offers the following resolution in recognition of Edward F. Butch Ginsvater. Whereas Edward F. Butch Ginsvater Jr. has been a lifetime resident of the City of St. Clair, Michigan, first being elected to serve on City Council in 2004. Whereas, over the course of nearly two decades of service to the community, Butch has served not only on the City Council, but in various other roles, providing leadership and guidance within the City of St. Clair and also representing the city. Whereas, the production of an event such as an offshore powerboat race on commercially navigable international waters and within the City of St. Clair requires a great deal of cooperation of all officials and organizations, it has been the utmost pleasure working with Butch in his role as a City Council member in the coordination and production of the St. Clair River Classic offshore race as a major event in the City of St. Clair. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the Board of Directors and members of Blue Water Offshore Racing salute the dedication of Edward F. Butch Ginsvater Jr. His advice, guidance, input, and counsel has served the St. Clair community well. Presented this 19th day of December, 2022.
Well done, Bob. Thank you. Anybody else want to say a few words about, any questions about anything, or? Okay, let's go to number 11. Mayor and Council, I do have a couple of things before I get into my thoughts on Mr. Ginsvater. They're mostly good.
Imagine that.
I do want to take a moment and recognize Tony Cavas passed away. And I don't know if for those who know Tony Cavas. He served on, when we had the Sesquicentennial. I actually said that word. He was on that committee, and if you remember that, it was a heck of a fun time. He was a teacher in Marine City. He was also a member of the Theater Guild. And he was just a good, solid guy, and he passed away. And I'm sorry to hear that because I knew him very well. He was, he was a St. Clair guy, I guess we'll say it like that. I guess I should, should I say something about the trash? Trash pickup will be the same as always this, this week and next week, Thursdays, all right? And I do want to say that, you know, everybody have happy holidays. But I do want to take a few minutes and tell you that Member Kleeman could not make it tonight. And he asked me a few meetings ago not to say anything about him, because he didn't want any recognition. But since he's not here, I guess I can do whatever I want. And as for that, I guess I will. Bill Kleeman served on City Council from 2015 to 16, 17 to 18, 21 to 22. We have a nice tribute to him here, and we'll make sure he gets that. I congratulate him on his service, and I thank him. He always got me to think and look at things a little differently. Now, on to this other fellow over here. I don't have a fancy frame like Bob Courier has, but I do have two certificates. One says Butch, one says Ed. Because I wasn't sure which name you wanted to go with.
I'm not even sure.
I'm not. So, Butch has been on council 19 years, you guys. 19 years, if you can imagine that. He was around for the inception of the Fire Authority, and that was just a magnanimous job. I was in the Golf Commission. How long you been on that?
Long time.
Yes, yeah. You remember, you served on the M-29 quarters. Did you remember that? How about the Sign Ordinance Committee?
Mm-hmm. The fact that one sticks with me.
That's the one that he loved so much, every day. Bill, we've been at this a year. How long are we supposed to be at this? Do you get it right? I don't know if I got it right or not. I can always count on Butch. I'm not kidding you either, over 19 years, then whenever we were faced with a problem and issue, something new, something, you know, different, I always could count on Butch not overreacting. He was very calm. My dad told me many, many years ago, before he passed away, he said, "Bill, the worst thing you do is overreact." Unfortunately, most people, the first thing you do is they overreact. But Butch is like maybe the opposite of that. He underreacts. And sometimes it sort of, I almost said a bad word, picked me off, because I'd be like, "Hey, come on, give me something here." But he would take his time and think about it, and I got to, I really grew to appreciate that when I talked to him, because I knew that he was going to not just fly off the handle and say, "I don't want that. Do you have anything about it yet?" But not him, it's the other way. Let me think about it for a while. So, with that in mind, because I could go on for a long time, a guy puts 19 years in, that's a lot, for anything. Eating ice cream, 19 years, that's a rough, that's a rough road to go. Oh, I picked ice cream, but anyway. This is a special tribute from the City Council and myself in recognition of his commitment to the City of St. Clair, his readiness to serve its citizens, his willingness to seek out the views of his fellow residents and apply them with a genuine understanding of the community. We are really losing a good man, and I am not afraid to say that because I worked with him long enough to know that his heart is St. Clair, and we're going to miss you, Butch boy. See, I just told him, you got to say a few words. Let me think about it.
I just want to say it's been a pleasure serving with you, Mayor. I'm Mike, Mayor Pro Town. All the past and present council members, all the past and present administrations, and all the committees that I was blessed to sit on. Most of all, it's been an honor serving the people of St. Clair. Thank you.
Okay, so any other council members want to say anything?
We're still trying to keep him on the Fire Authority.
Yeah.
I can honestly say, the last year, getting to be part of this group and getting to look behind the curtain and see how, I always refer to it as how Oz is run. It's been enlightening. It's been very informative. It's made me even more proud of my community, which that I now serve. And Butch, the City of St. Clair is what it is today because of you.
Thank you.
And people like you. Thank you.
You know what everybody's forgetting? He was a, how many years were you a fireman?
20.
20 years as a fireman, too.
And he operated that Butch time.
You are correct. Still do.
I have so many stories I could tell you about that, and I won't do that to you, Butch. I will not do that to you. All right, anybody else want to sign in with something? You're more than welcome to. Good luck.
Thank you.
Ann Marie, keep him straight, will you? All right, well then, I guess I'm going to ask for, go to number 12, and ask for a motion to go to a closed session to discuss a confidential attorney-client communication.
So moved.
All right, any questions? All roll, please.
Cleeman is absent, Coufa.
Yeah.
Laporte.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Boltz is absent. Kinzvater.
Yes.
Cedar.
Yes.
Motion carries.
You guys, we're not going to take any action when we come out. You're just going to talk at us, right? All right, so I, just to keep as blunt as I can, you guys have to leave, because we have the whole closed session in here, and you can't be around. But you can sit upstairs, and we'll come and get you if you want to come back in here, but we didn't do. Happy holidays, everybody, be safe. Thanks for coming, offshore. Keep up the good work.